Good evening, everyone. I called to order the virtual study session of the Lakewood City Council on March 3, 2024, 7:02 PM. To connect with tonight's council meeting online, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any link at LakewoodSpeaks.org, our online forum for public comments. We will be leaving that open online through the study session and into tomorrow morning until 10:00 AM for any comments that anyone would like to make related to tonight's presentation. With that, I will go ahead and hand the floor over to the clerk. Will our city clerk please call the roll?
Strom.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
LeBier.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Mayak Guerrero.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sharzai.
Here.
And Sinks.
Here.
Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you so much, and I will very quickly actually hand the floor over to Travis Parker, our Chief of Sustainability and Community Development Branch, to introduce this evening's topic and tonight's speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Excited to be with you tonight for a fun subject. We're going to be talking about building energy performance and creating a benchmarking program. Your presenter tonight is going to be Jeff Wong from the Sustainability Division. But first, I want to introduce you all virtually to our new head of sustainability in Lakewood. I don't know if she's on here yet, but Katie McCain started a week ago today. She joins us as from South Carolina. She was the Director of Sustainability in Charleston, South Carolina, and has already hit the ground running, is I know is really excited to work with you all and people in the city of Lakewood. And so I don't, again, I don't see her yet on here, but she's joining us tonight.
I'm here.
Oh, hi, Katie. And we'll be available for questions as well after Jeff's done presenting.
Hi, everyone. So happy to be here and be serving the great city of Lakewood. I'm really looking forward to working with you all and collaborating on how we can improve sustainability and meet all of the city's goals. So looking forward to it. Thanks for having me.
With that, we'll let Jeff start his presentation.
Sounds good. I will share my screen. Can I just get a quick thumbs up if you could see that? Great. One moment. All right, well, as Mr. Parker mentioned, my name is Jeff Wong with the Community Sustainability, Climate, and Zero Waste Division. And tonight I'll be presenting a condensed version of the pre-recorded presentation that was posted on Lakewood Speaks about the development of a building energy benchmarking program for Lakewood's largest buildings. This building performance program is focused on the largest buildings in Lakewood. The first phase of this project is to develop an energy benchmarking program, which is the focus of this session. Benchmarking is the annual tracking and reporting of energy use at the individual building level. It also allows building owners to be more aware of their energy use and compare how their buildings are performing against other similar building types in the area. Benchmarking is a key strategy that's listed in the city's adopted sustainability plan to reduce building emissions. Phase two of the project is the development of a building performance program that would set individual long-term energy or emissions targets for Lakewood's largest buildings. To help building owners achieve these targets, we'd provide some robust resources like efficiency improvement roadmaps and connections to incentives. So while this presentation is focused on benchmarking, I'd like to explain how it fits into the overall strategy for reducing greenhouse gas emissions for our building sector. This emissions reduction roadmap shows how we generally plan on reaching our climate goals and commitments as they relate to the building sector. The first couple steps of the roadmap are to review our current greenhouse gas emissions and see where we are compared to our overall goals and targets. Then we want to think about what the existing buildings in Lakewood look like by analyzing the city's building stock. Once we've done that, we can start thinking about energy at the individual building level. How much energy is a building using now? What optimizations can be made to reduce emissions? And that's what this presentation is really focused on this evening, energy benchmarking. So once we have that information, we can dive deeper into each individual building and identify which components use the most energy, which field types are being consumed, and identify building weatherization opportunities. This information can help building owners and managers identify improvements to increase efficiency and reduce emissions. From the city's staff perspective, we can also develop broad-scale emissions reduction strategies that could be applied to various building types. We know that there'll be lots of obstacles and barriers to consider, so we'll have to dive into the details, offer supporting resources, and put together solutions in the form of programs and policies that both advance our emissions reduction goals and address the challenges of the obstacles and barriers that we've identified. Next, I'll speak in more detail about each step of the roadmap. So the first steps of the roadmap are to understand the current state of the city's overall greenhouse gas emissions as well as our emissions goals. This is a snapshot of our latest community-wide greenhouse gas inventory from 2021, and it shows that building energy use accounts for the majority of emissions in the city, about 42%. About half of our building emissions come from residential buildings, and the other half come from non-residential buildings. This chart shows how the city's emissions have changed over time since 2007. These emissions primarily come from building energy, transportation, waste, and consumption. Since 2007, the emissions have decreased, and that's mainly due to the increased use of renewable energy in our electricity grid from Excel. The city has adopted science-based targets to determine our emissions reduction goals, and they're calculated using the latest climate science and data to ensure that our community emissions reductions are in line with limiting global temperature increase to 1.5 degrees Celsius. The city has two science-based targets. The first is an interim goal of reducing emissions by 61% by 2030 from 2018 levels, and that's represented by the dash line on this graphic. The second target is to reach net zero levels by 2050. The dotted area between 2021 and 2030 show forecasted emissions under the business-as-usual scenario, which is a scenario where the city doesn't take any specific actions and relies on external entities like Excel to decrease emissions. You can see that we're still pretty far away from our interim science-based target, and it's unlikely that we're going to reach that without additional city action. I do want to note that this year, we'll be completing a greenhouse gas inventory for 2024, so we'll be able to better gauge our progress towards our goals. So how are we going to reach our targets? One strategy is to try and decrease our building sector emissions with an energy benchmarking and building performance program. So the next step after understanding our current emissions and how they compare to our goals is to look at the city's building stock. There are about 50,000 total primary structures in Lakewood, encompassing nearly 120 million square feet of gross floor area. And one way to think about categorizing the different types of buildings that we have in our community is by square footage. This data shows a breakdown of buildings in Lakewood by square footage, and you could see that most structures are less than 5,000 square feet, and those are primarily residential homes. These buildings account for nearly half of total building emissions. And on the other end of the spectrum, we have about 200 buildings that are greater than 50,000 square feet in size. Those largest buildings contribute about 31% of total building emissions. The state of Colorado currently has existing benchmarking and building performance standards in place for buildings that are 50,000 square feet or greater in size. There are about 195 buildings between 25 and 50,000 square feet, 435 between 10 and 25,000 square feet, and 590 between 5 and 10,000 square feet. On a per-building basis, the emissions per structure increases as a square footage category increases, which makes sense because larger buildings generally use more energy. While we can put together a general estimate of where building emissions come from based on our building stock, we don't know how much energy individual buildings use. That's important because different buildings consume different amounts of energy and different types of energy, and we need to understand the details before we develop broad-scale emissions reduction strategies. This is where the energy benchmarking program that we're developing comes in. There are existing resources that can provide general building energy data based on use type. For example, both the Commercial Building Energy Consumption Survey, or CBEX, and Energy Star Portfolio Manager can provide regional data based on building types and climate zones. The challenge is that these data sets are not Lakewood-specific for individual buildings. And even when we compare buildings of similar use type, there can still be major differences in energy use. Because this data gap exists, we're looking at a building benchmarking program to better understand energy use from our largest buildings, similar to what other communities are doing across the country. So what is energy benchmarking? At the very basic level, benchmarking is measuring and reporting energy performance of a single individual building over a specific period of time, and typically that's one year. The data can inform stakeholders like building owners and managers on their existing energy use, and studies have shown that just by being more aware of energy use through reporting and being able to compare a building's performance to other similar buildings, there can be an annual energy savings of 2.4% for the first three years of reporting. The benchmarking data also provides baseline energy data that can be used for applying future building performance standards. Building energy benchmarking and performance standards are still relatively new across the country, but this map shows that there are several jurisdictions that have already established programs. For example, the entire states of California and Massachusetts have benchmarking requirements in place. And as I mentioned before, the state of Colorado has benchmarking in building performance standards as well as the city and county of Denver, and Fort Collins is about to adopt a building performance standard as well. A benchmarking program brings benefits to both building owners and occupants as well as the city. From the building owner's perspective, a successful program can lower utility bills by reducing energy use. For example, we estimate an owner of a building that's 10,000 square feet could save about $1,100 on their annual utility bill based on the average benchmarking savings amount I just discussed. This program could also help owners prioritize ongoing building improvements and investments during the span of a building's useful life and improve occupancy comfort when people are in these higher-performing buildings. For the city, a program like this could help decrease community-wide energy use and greenhouse gas emissions and give us a better understanding of the progress we're making towards our reduction goals. Better operating buildings can also lead to increased economic investment and opportunities because residents and business owners generally want to occupy more efficient, comfortable buildings. So going back to the roadmap, once we have a better understanding of individual building energy use, we can take a closer look at the individual components of a building, how much energy the equipment uses, the type of fuel used as well. After understanding building energy use and type, we can develop new emissions reduction strategies and solutions that make sense for our community. Some examples of reduction strategies are to implement a building performance standard program, which is phase two of this program for our largest buildings. We could also focus on energy efficiency improvements like LED lighting retrofitts, which we're already doing, and installing more efficient appliances, and incorporating building electrification. Once we've compiled the list of potential strategies, we can look at all the obstacles and barriers that exist to implementing the strategies such as limited time and resources or a lack of trained workforce and equity considerations so that we can figure out the appropriate resources to minimize these challenges. At the end of the roadmap, our intention is to present solutions in the form of comprehensive programs and policies that will reduce our building sector emissions and enhance the livelihood of our present and future community. We want to make sure that we've taken the time necessary to think through all the critical questions and challenges to produce robust and successful emissions reduction solutions. In the past several months, we've been developing a building performance program for the city's largest buildings to help lower emissions from existing buildings, and it starts with this proposed benchmarking policy. Last summer, we began the community engagement process to get feedback on a potential benchmarking program, including meetings with our advisory group. During the past few months, we've been working on drafting details of the policy as well as figuring out the internal needs to implementing a long-term benchmarking program. Now we're at the phase of getting feedback from city council through the study session. Throughout this process, we've had ongoing stakeholder engagement, including putting together a Lakewood Together page that's been up since last summer and is regularly updated, visits to our local business associations, and using our standard city communication channels like our Friday Report and Sustainability newsletters. We had several advisory group meetings to help inform the benchmarking policy development process, and those meeting minutes are all posted on Lakewood Together. The goal of the advisory group was to advise staff on actions and policy related to energy benchmarking to support our greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals. The advisory group represented multiple city stakeholders, including representatives from the LAC and Planning Commission, the local business community, housing affordability, and community partners and building industry experts. As we developed the proposed benchmarking program, we wanted to make sure we were creating a program that's effective, implementable, and reflective of our priorities while also considering the impacts on community-wide greenhouse gas emissions and additional burdens that may be placed on building owners. With input from our advisory group and community feedback, we're proposing a benchmarking policy that would apply to all multifamily and non-residential buildings that are 10,000 square feet and greater in gross floor area. Applicable multifamily buildings are buildings with units that share a common water heating or air heating and cooling system. Non-residential buildings include commercial, public, and manufacturing buildings. The state already has a benchmarking requirement in place for buildings that are 50,000 square feet and larger, like I mentioned earlier, so property owners of those buildings would need to report to both the state and Lakewood, but they'd only be subject to state enforcement rules. Federal buildings are not included in this policy. Most structures in Lakewood are less than 5,000 square feet, about 97% of all buildings here. We have about 830 buildings in Lakewood that are greater than 10,000 square feet in size, and they account for nearly 50% of all building emissions in Lakewood. One of the reasons we're proposing going beyond the state standard of 50,000 square feet is because there's still potential to significantly reduce long-term building emissions through benchmarking in a long-term building performance standard policy. Some of the reasons why we decided on 10,000 square feet as that lower square footage threshold include the greenhouse gas reduction impact on a per-structure basis, the number of buildings that staff could feasibly manage based on staffing models from other similar programs across the country, and the capacity that building owners have to learn about and comply with this policy. For example, many property owners of buildings that are less than 10,000 square feet don't have the same resources that owners of larger buildings often have, like maintenance staff and property managers that could help with data reporting. Based on some preliminary estimates, a benchmarking program for Lakewood buildings, 10,000 square feet and greater in size could result in annual utility bill savings of $4.5 million. The proposed benchmarking program would include exemptions and waivers. Property owners would be responsible for submitting waiver requests and qualifying exemptions are listed here, including owners of buildings that have limited occupancy or no certificate of occupancy, undergoing a renovation that's more than one year, having a demolition permit in place, or if they're experiencing financial hardship. Additionally, manufacturing and industrial buildings can be exempt if they show proof of an existing energy efficiency plan. In terms of compliance, building owners would be required to submit their annual benchmarking data on June 1 of the following year in alignment with the state's annual reporting date. There'd not be any fees associated with reporting. A violation would occur if the owner doesn't submit their annual benchmarking data or receive an approved waiver from the city by June 1 of each year. If the property owner fails to report by June 1, they'd have 90 days to correct the violation in the program's first year and 30 days in each subsequent year before incurring a civil penalty of $2,000 per violation. This penalty amount is aligned with what both the state of Colorado and Denver charges. Staff did a survey of the cost for third-party consultants to perform benchmarking services on behalf of building owners, and the range we received was between $295 and $850 per building. So it'll likely be cheaper for property owners to have a third party help them with compliance than to incur a penalty. For the buildings that have to comply with the state's benchmarking requirement already, those property owners would only be subject to the state's fines. As you know, last summer, the city received a $5 million award from the Department of Energy to support the development of a benchmarking and building performance standard program. However, the status of the award is uncertain at this time due to recent executive orders and court challenges. This is the proposed timeline of the benchmarking program, assuming that our DOE grant funding is released by April, May this year. If that's the case, staff is prepared to bring a benchmarking ordinance to city council for consideration this spring, and if adopted, we develop program rules and the required program infrastructure throughout the rest of this year. In early 2026, we'd have all our benchmarking resources finalized, including the reporting portal for property owners. June 1 of 2026 will be the first benchmarking reporting deadline, and reporting would continue each subsequent year on June 1. With all that being said, due to the uncertainty of the grant status, the proposed timeline may change. Even though we're focused on phase one of this project, which is benchmarking, I wanted to provide a little more context on how it informs our next phase, which would be a building performance standard program. In most cases across the country, benchmarking programs precede building performance standards. Building Performance Standards, or BPS, establish specific energy or emissions targets for individual buildings. The benchmarking data for those buildings create a baseline for existing energy use and allows us to track progress toward the standards that are established, which includes a 2050 net zero emissions goal. By providing a standard for buildings, we can also give a roadmap for how building owners can most efficiently make capital improvement projects related to energy use and efficiency, transition to cleaner sources of energy, and adopt more renewable energy. Our hope is that we can create an impactful but flexible program where these standards can be aligned with when building owners need to make their building and equipment improvements anyways over the next 25 years. When it's time to replace major systems that use energy, we want building owners to make smart decisions that both improve their building performance and investment and support our community climate goals. Next, I want to give you an idea of what the benchmarking experience is like for a building owner. Once a program is in place, they receive several notifications through mail and other communication channels to learn about the program and its benefits and the reporting requirements. When it comes time to reporting their data, they would set up an Energy Star Portfolio Manager account, which is free. They'd then connect their existing Excel energy account to Energy Star Portfolio, so all that Excel data would be automatically sent over to Energy Star Portfolio Manager once a month. And then they'd add the city of Lakewood as a reporting entity. Then, once a year, they would hit a submit data button. To give you a sense of the amount of time it takes, the city already benchmarks its largest buildings, and it takes about one to two hours to initially set up the account information for each building, and then a few minutes once a year to submit that data button. To help with compliance, property owners would receive multiple reporting deadline reminders from the city. They would then either go through the reporting process each year or receive an approved waiver. We know that a building benchmarking program is a big change to the responsibility of property owners right now. So with the help of the community advisory group feedback, we identified some potential barriers and solutions that can help make this program a realistic one that benefits all of Lakewood. Some of the potential barriers and solutions include understanding the requirements of the program, which could be supported through effective education and community outreach, the lack of time to learn how to comply with requirements, which we could address through both in-person and online trainings as well as a help desk, and the potential costs which could be mitigated by not requiring any filing fee and the option to use a third-party service provider to complete benchmarking at a cost that's less than the proposed civil penalty. In terms of equity, some solutions include creating translated In terms of equity, some solutions include creating translated materials, hosting trainings in Spanish-only, and providing enhanced onsite assistance. There are several administrative needs to set up and implement a successful benchmarking program. Following an adopted policy, staff would need to develop the administrative rules and details for the program. We'd have to create a list of covered buildings that would need to comply along with applicable contact information, which we know from other communities to be one of the most difficult parts of the entire program setup. We'd also need to set up the software infrastructure for the program, like the online reporting platform and mapping features, educate the public, and provide trainings for property owners, and continue to engage with our community. Once a program is set up, the implementation requirements include communications with property owners and managers, operating a help desk to answer questions about the program, approving waivers, addressing non-compliance and code enforcement, analyzing the data that we collect and making sure it's accurate, which is also one of the most time-consuming parts of this process. And we want to continue communicating with all our stakeholders to make sure that we're making program improvements throughout. The estimated annual cost for the development and implementation of the benchmarking program is $300,000 to $350,000 in its first year, and slightly less for subsequent years once the setup is complete. This includes the cost for the administrative needs that I just reviewed, including support from an additional FTE or a contracted equivalent and third-party consultants. This cost estimate would be just for the benchmarking phase of the project and does not include projected costs of a future building performance standard program. For this study session in particular, we're looking to get feedback from council members about the proposed policy structure, timeline, and because you're out in the community speaking directly with building owners and tenants, any resources you think we should consider to develop a successful program? Again, this proposed policy was developed, assuming that we'd be able to utilize funds from our DOE grant award, but as you know, the current funding status is unknown. Right now, we have multiple city departments tracking the status of our federal grants, including this one, and we'll continue to do so with the hope that we can present a proposed ordinance for consideration to city council soon. So in the meantime, we're considering other funding opportunities, including the possibility of making a budget request for 2026 if the grant funds are still frozen later this year. Thank you for your attention tonight, and Mr. Parker and I are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wong, for that presentation. Before I hand over the floor for questions, I will add that actually dovetailing off that last slide, and you talked about the uncertainties with regards to funding. So what that could look like if council did want to move forward with this and we were to find out that that funding is no longer available through the grant that was coming from the federal government, then we, timing may actually align in that it then becomes a conversation for us that are planning retreat as we're setting spending priorities and planning priorities over the next year. So just knowing that that's probably a question that somebody will have, I thought I would answer that ahead of time. And if anybody has questions, we can certainly go a little bit deeper into that. But do we have, I am ready with my pen and my paper, who do we have questions? Who wants to start us off? Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Thanks. First, I want to say this looks great. I'm excited that it's moving and happening. I know that benchmarking is something that's been asked for for a while from the community and is also something that is relatively ambitious. So delighted to see we're going to do that and then have those next steps of all of the various programs that can sort of escalate from that foundation of this information. I have just a couple of questions, which I think this is something where, as long as these were items that we were able to discuss and think about as we move through the process, is sort of more like my level of question today. I think one major thing is, is there going to be a level of city-based auditing and quality control for the self-reporting? I think that you talked a little bit about that process, but that's something that I would worry about. Not necessarily that every single one, obviously that defeats the purpose of the building owners incurring that cost themselves, but just some level to make sure that the numbers make sense on paper and maybe a handful of site visits at random, so that building owners are aware of that potential enforcement.
Yeah, thanks for that insightful question, Counselor Matt Guerrero, because it is an issue that other jurisdictions have faced. You're right, I did mention data validation very quickly, but that, as I mentioned, is a very crucial part of making sure that the data is accurate. So there's a couple protections in place. The first one is through the reporting system. The EPA's Energy Star Portfolio Manager account has some data validation kind of built into the system already, so that can detect user error, whether that's on purpose or not. And then we'll have our own data validation team reviewing data and having automated flags in case there is data that does not seem correct or out of the ordinary based on previously reported data or other industry kind of like average energy use. So that's kind of how we're approaching that right now. And I think as we move forward, if this policy is adopted and we're developing our administrative rules and regulations, we'll be able to address that in a little more detail.
Great. I mean, I think that leads me to my second question, which is not just about the funding from the federal government, but also the data and analysis and support of these programs. We don't, we obviously don't know what's going to happen, but I think I'd be curious to hear if there's cases of other cities collaborating with the state government to make sure that we're sort of resilient in our data on a lot of climate items, benchmarking being one of them in terms of having the right calculators, the right places to store them, all of those things for whatever. I don't know exactly what we rely on here versus state level versus the federal government. But I know that in some other industries, there has already been a fair amount of just like really cleaning house on the data that's being kept and then offered even to municipalities. And so that is something that I don't think you have to have an answer for right now, but I would just encourage us to try to work regionally as much as possible to pressure the state to help create that resilience as we work on this program. I also am wondering how to go about, like thinking about how new builds are then calculated. This becomes maybe baked in in their building if it happens to be lining up in this exact time or other ways that were, like this combined with the development menu ends up with something kind of interesting in terms of trying to calculate where buildings are coming in at when they're being built now.
Yeah, happy to address that. I think they're kind of like complementary programs. So the EDM is about, you know, making sure that our new development is holistic and reflective of our community priorities. And benchmarking is really just reporting of the data. So if there is new development, we would presumably have a place, administrative mechanism to allow a waiver for that first year or partial year, and then they would enter into the full program once they have a 12 months' worth of data to report consecutively in a calendar year. Hope that addresses your question.
Yes, 100%. And then I think the last sort of big chunk of question that I have is I think more, again, in this realm of, I encourage us all to like look at this and be rigorous about this as we move forward beyond benchmarking and as we're thinking about how we're going to use benchmarking, is to recognize that a lot of times that we end up in reduction programs, it's all, it's sometimes percentage-based, sometimes like total metric tons of carbon, sometimes about electricity usage rate, there's a lot of different metrics to put there. But I would definitely encourage us to think about how we are able to not punish good deeds, essentially. So when you have a building that is maybe newer or that has already done a lot of retrofitting on their own, so they come in, their benchmark is actually lower per square foot than typical for that type of building usage, but then they still have to meet these same metrics. Obviously, if their total emissions is less, and then it's, you know, say 5% a year, 8% or whatever, that's just, that is less actual emissions that they have to be reducing. But I think we've seen some of the earlier programs that essentially like the worst actors had the easiest time meeting those for a few years of programs that came after benchmarking. So again, I think that sounds like something that's probably already on your mind, and I know it's something that gets talked about a lot, but that is something that I'm definitely going to continue to like bring up and want to work on with staff as we figure out how to use the benchmarking most effectively.
Thanks for that input.
Counselor Singh.
Thank you. So I heard you say the cost to the city would be $300,000 to $350,000 for the first year. So my question comes, is this program going to be the most bang for the buck compared to other sustainability initiatives? Such as, I, yeah, so if you understand the question it means, then will this program reduce more carbon emissions than any other program that we can think of? You know, any other program, meaning maybe recycling or trash hauling that still is a problem in my mind? So maybe, maybe that's enough of clarification for my question. If not, let me try to clarify some more, but jump in for me.
No, that's a very insightful question, Counselor Singh. I appreciate that. I would say yes, the benchmarking program, when paired with the building performance standard program, which is Phase 2 of the project, could potentially be one of the most impactful policies that the city could enact in terms of addressing our overall greenhouse gas emissions. You may recall that one of the slides I showed with that circle chart showed that 42% of our total emissions come from the building sector. Waste represents 1% to 2% of emissions, I believe. I think it's less than 1%. There's other reasons why we prioritize circular economy and waste reduction as well, not necessarily just looking at greenhouse gas reduction. So I don't want to kind of minimize the importance of reducing waste and addressing waste diversion, but from a greenhouse gas perspective in terms of reductions for the building sector, I would say this is one of the most potentially impactful policies if we're able to first adopt benchmarking and then have a successful building benchmarking, building performance standard program later on that is effective and also implementable. I'd say it's really important that we can learn how to work with our building owners to make those improvements that are necessary over the next 25 years or so.
Great. Thanks for that. And just one more question. So you mentioned the state has regulations and that the state has fines for not doing some things that the building should do. You didn't mention anything, maybe something would come down the road that Lakewood would have fines? Or what are the thoughts about imposing fines from the city?
Thank you. So there, I kind of breezed over it, but one of the administrative things that we're looking at is issuing a $2,000 civil penalty. So that would be the fine that is the same as what the state charges right now. What we want to avoid is double charging for the buildings that are 50,000 square feet and larger already. So if the state is already enforcing benchmarking on those buildings, we don't want to go ahead and fine them again.
I see. So not a lot of ways to recoup then the costs the first year in starting up the program. And that's, of course, understandable, you know, as we're moving into something. You know, there would be a cost the first year. I understand that. Well, and actually, I have one more question, the last one. You also said that the city already benchmarks? You just kind of said that real fast. Would you talk about how the city already benchmarks?
Yeah, so we have four buildings that are 50,000 square feet and larger, so we have to comply with the state's benchmarking standards. So we've kind of already gone through that process and understand all the requirements that need to be done and have a good sense of what the building owner's experience is like in terms of reporting.
Great. Great. Thanks. That's all I have.
Counselor Lo.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. I thought this was a really, really strong, fantastic presentation. Thank you for all the work that's clearly got into this. Just a very thoughtful like approach based on everything that you put forward, and it just seems like a lot of analysis has gone into where you're setting these sort of thresholds and it's just a lot of data sort of looking at how to sort of target the larger buildings in our city that have the largest greenhouse gas emissions. So thank you. Also, just want to echo what Mr. Parker said. Quick welcome to Ms. McCain. We're excited to have you onboard. I know it's a very important position for a lot of our sustainability goals, so we're thrilled you're onboard and excited to be working with you. Just a couple quick questions. One builds on Counselor Singh's question. So, Mr. Wong, the annual cost of like $300,000 to $350,000. So could you just connect, worst-case scenario, if there is some issue with this $5 million grant, was the $5 million grant anticipated to sort of cover that cost for like several years? Or was that covering a totally separate cost that wasn't like the annual $300,000 operating cost?
Thanks for that question, Counselor Lo. The grant was intended to cover the entire cost of this program, both benchmarking and building performance standards, so including the $300,000 to $350,000 that I talked about. So the grant is a great opportunity if we get it. No cost share to the city. So we'll see what happens, but the grant was intended to cover all those costs that I presented.
A $5 million grant presumably, that would basically cover, unless there's a bunch-
Sorry, I forgot to, sorry to cut you off. I forgot to mention it's for eight years, the grant.
Okay. So, but that, I mean, that would actually cover more than eight years of operating costs, unless there are like additional sort of startup costs that aren't included in the annual operating costs.
Yeah, the $5 million is intended to cover not only benchmarking, but the development of a building performance standard program afterwards, as well as supporting resources and investing in our workforce development. So kind of all the things that go along with creating a building performance standard policy and resources that we want to invest in our community to make sure it's a successful program.
Got it. In a scenario where there was some issue with the grant, which, you know, fingers crossed, obviously, we really, really want to avoid that, this 2K civil penalty fine that you mentioned, I mean, would it be expected to cover any meaningful part of the operating costs? Or would you expect that to be pretty negligible?
I would expect it to be negligible. I mean, our wish is that we get 100% compliance, right, with our, with this proposed policy? And to give you a sense of compliance, I believe Denver's been running their program for seven or eight years now, and they have over a 90% compliance rate, which is pretty impressive. So we strive to have a high compliance rate. So I don't, we wouldn't want to rely on penalties to offset any sort of costs, I think, administratively.
Is there, without, I don't necessarily want to scratch this scab too much tonight, but is there any, beyond the very, very broad cross-cutting freeze that the new administration came out with a few weeks ago, and a general sense that perhaps there's less interest in the new administration in funding this kind of sustainability work? Do we have any reason to believe that this grant specifically will be pulled back? Like, have we gotten any indication of that from CEO or the state or the feds?
I will say that we are in a tracking mode right now. As I mentioned, multiple departments, me checking daily. And the general consensus is that there's no consensus. It's very, funding has varied right now. There's a lot of questions, very few answers. So I'm afraid that I can't provide a great answer to how this grant will go in terms of funding priorities for the federal administration.
Thanks, and thanks for tracking it. I mean, it does seem pretty outrageous, the idea that a grant that's already been awarded would be sort of clawed back, particularly for something that is clearly a community priority. So if there's any way that council can advocate for that, if that does become a risk, I hope we'll have an opportunity to do that. Just briefly, I mean, it seemed to me there was already an implicit case from the data you presented, but could you take just a second to talk through why you set the floor for this at 10,000 square feet rather than 5,000 square feet, which I think is where Denver's benchmarking was?
So Denver's benchmarking program actually goes down to 20,000 square feet.
Oh.
They have a separate program related to their building code that does go down to 5,000 square- They have a separate program uh related to their building code um that does go down to five thousand square feet and electrifying equipment. Um so there. Um I could see why there could be some confusion regarding that, but in terms of actual benchmarking reporting, it goes down to twenty thousand square feet for them. For our community, that that jump in terms of the number of buildings that we would have to manage from from ten thousand and then going down to five thousand square feet, we're talking about. Um adding another five hundred ninety structures if we go down to five thousand square feet. And then when you think about the actual greenhouse gas emissions on a per structure basis. And and this is in the slides as well. Um. Those structures that are five thousand square feet are less than half of the emissions compared to uh per structure compared to ten thousand square feet. So kind of on a per. Per um emissions basis, there's a lot more efficiencies associated with going just down to ten thousand square feet. So part of it is administrative, part of it is thinking about how we want to invest our time and money in terms of. A program like this. And then finally, kind of from the building owner's perspective, we know that a lot of small. Um building owners do have those properties that are less than ten thousand square feet. Many times it's just one or two employees and and the administrative burden is very different for benchmarking compared to. Um a building that's fifty thousand square feet.
That makes a lot of sense. And last good question on the li- the the slide covering sort of exemptions. Um uh that there was the idea that a building that had fifty percent limited occupancy. Um might be exempted. What could you just talk us through? It it wasn't obvious to me what the logic for that is, like, why why if the building is half empty? Is it just it's more difficult to deal with compliance or?
Um it's more that presumably that a low occupancy spaces have less energy use, significantly less energy use. Um and that it wouldn't be, the data wouldn't be a fair representation of. Their normal typical energy use, which we need to understand if we're going to develop a future building performance standard as well.
Got it. Okay. Thank you again. Thank you for the incredibly thoughtful approach. I um. Fingers crossed that the the grant doesn't significantly delay us from being able to move this forward. I I for one would be. En- enthusiastic and looking forward to to getting a chance to to move this forward in in ordinance form. So let us know if we can help with that and fingers crossed.
Counselor Cruz.
Thanks, and just want to echo um some of my fellow counselors. Um feedback that this has been a really great presentation. Also really appreciated the the one in preparation, and it's very clear that a lot of thought and time and. Um work in the community has gone into this, so I really appreciate that and I'm excited to be at this point in this phase of the of the project. Um and I'm uh excited to hopefully see this move forward, uh even in the face of somebody's uh funding challenges. Um and so I just had I had two questions. Um. One for the mapping, just wanted to clarify because I know in the the pre-recorded presentation, you kind of like showed a map. Of where some of the like affected buildings were in Lakewood. And then in this presentation, I think you're talking about mapping, right, as like a way of. Of visualizing the data moving forward. So just want to kind of um learn more about like where some like how we can see better kind of where some of these buildings are and like. What that mapping or transparency about kind of where different buildings are would look like under the proposed model.
Got it. Thank you for that question, Counselor Cruz. Um yeah, mapping is an important feature of. Basically any benchmarking program that's already in place in the country, and it's a way of visualizing. Not only where our buildings ten thousand square uh feet and higher are located, but also the amount of energy use and. I think it's also important for us as a city to present transparent data as well. So. Um similar to other jurisdictions across the country, we want to make sure that all this. This data, this energy use data is transparent, so anyone can access and really understand which buildings are overperforming or underperforming. Um over time and in compliance with this ordinance, potential ordinance. There is, um I'm happy to share my screen if you'd like. Um I have an example of. Um what the mapping could look like. Um. And this is an example of a map from Philadelphia, uh basically circles representing locations of these different buildings. Um and you can access and click on the type of building um to get information about that, as well as. Energy data, whether they're in compliance or not. So that's kind of the level of data that we're thinking about and um Denver also, Colorado, they both have great online maps as well, so. It's those are pretty easy to find online.
Thanks. That's helpful. Um and then my second question, um and and I guess this this maybe is more of a question for. A future in which we have this benchmarking program. We're working towards the building performance standard. Um. Uh uh kind of North Star. Um I know, and you spoke to this um a lot in your presentation around. Kind of thoughts around equity and particularly in kind of some of the older parts of Lakewood where there's like older multifamily um complexes. I know. That there's been questions and other um contexts around some of the building performance standards around. Like what the cost for renters might look like in terms of coming up to standards. Um but then I think also this could. Dubtail really well in thinking about how we um continue to improve the standards for folks. Living in some of these older buildings, um much of which is affordable housing. Um and so kind of like, I I know you spoke to this a little bit curious, like. Where y'all's thinking is on that front for these like multifamily units and also like. What the coordination looks like moving forward if we were to move to a building performance standards with, you know, the um housing and. Level of community team and and thinking about how some of these things intersect.
Yeah, that's a that's a great question and one that comes up very often because we know housing affordability is one of the top issues here in Lakewood and across the country. So we're very much aware that that's something that needs to be taken into account during phase two, the development of the process. We want to be really intentional to make sure that we're not. Kind of exacerbating any other inequities while we're trying to address this one, but. We absolutely believe that every everyone deserves to live in a high performing, comfortable building, including those that are in lower income neighborhoods, and I think that. Um we have the opportunity to do that with the a potential building performance standard. Part of our five million dollar grant included significant investment in an equity priority building that would provide. Uh an equity priority building program that would provide additional resources and incentives. To help offset the cost for potential building improvements and also with uh. Different types of communications as well. So that's definitely something that we are thinking about and want to take into account as we move forward um into phase two, but. Uh for now, we're kind of focused on phase one to get that moving first.
Totally, and that's that's really helpful to understand that that's part of what you all were thinking of funding, because I think, you know, if there is a future in which. Lakewood is not receiving this money under the current administration and we're kind of considering what council's priorities look like in funding this, I think. That that should be a part of our conversation in terms of our long term visioning of what we're spending, so that's that's very helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Nystrom.
Thank you. Um and Mr. Wong, great presentation. Um I'm just curious. I know um I think it was a presentation by the economic development team and they talked about. Um the engagement in um programs to change out LED bulbs and and things like that. Are you currently or do you plan on kind of tracking that across the board? Do you have an any idea like what kind of uptake there was um? On those programs and engaging in those programs? We're just curious.
Yeah, thanks for that question. That's actually one of our programs as well through sustainability. We we are working with. Uh we've been partnering the past three years with Excel Energy on a small business energy program uh to help small business owners. Get free energy audits as well as um free LED upgrades. That program was on pause. Um the second half of last year due to funding issues with the Public Utilities Commission and Excel Energy. However, this year, um I just got word last month that this program is continuing. I actually have a meeting next week with um Excel to talk about continuing this program, so. Um we are confident that they are will continue to be uptake and we're excited to provide these LED retrofit updates um for our community. In terms of metrics, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I believe that there was a mention of that number in the November council session. Uh study session that we presented last year.
Okay, um and is there any? Well, probably not at this point, but I'm just wondering if you've heard any. Discussion about expanding that beyond LED bulbs and things like that, you know, um in concert with what Excel Energy is doing. Because I know they also offer programs for um, you know, larger commercial buildings, but smaller buildings as well, so. I'm just wondering how we can kind of get some traction and momentum in that area while we're waiting to find out what's going on with the grant and if the grant doesn't come through. You know, um I think it's it's pretty critical that we start making some progress.
Yeah, those are those are all great points and and the business committee is, as I showed here, they're. They have some of the largest emissions associated with that, but they. Also have rebate opportunities. So Excel recently passed their clean heat plan, and so there are new rebates. As of January, specifically for businesses um to help electrify, to help increase efficiency, and. We're fortunate that the the um kind of freeze in federal funding is not impacting. Um utility rebates here in Colorado. So Excel is moving forward. They've um already committed to. These rebates through their clean heat plan, and that's already been um adopted through the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay, and 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 have they um? Do you know whether those rebates apply to municipal buildings as well?
Um, some of them do, yes. Um so we are tracking that as we kind of work through our other projects, including the new facilities um campus.
Okay, um and you had mentioned um. Part of the grant being earmarked for workforce development. Is there a percentage um? That's dedicated to workforce development or is that contingent on? Kind of the findings from the benchmarking?
Um in terms of the five million dollar grant?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but um. We had several hundred thousands of dollars allocated for investing in workforce development in our grant application. Uh in terms of a partnership with Red Rocks Community College and their training programs as well as um. Workforce development for apprenticeships in Colorado. So that isn't really contingent on benchmarking results, but we know that a. Building performance standard will create an increased need for a trained workforce, which is why we wanted to. Set aside a significant amount of funding going back into the community to kind of address that workforce issue that we know exists.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
Is, maybe this is getting ahead of ourselves, but is there some thought on staff's part that? We're willing to wait X number of days or months or years to see whether this funding is going to come come through or at some point. City council has to decide whether to devote the resources to implement this plan in some fashion and.
I think I think that's a hard one to answer, Counselor Ryan. I appreciate that question, but um I know city leadership is is closely tracking. What's going on and kind of evaluating the risks um as well as our our own budget, right, and our own priorities. So that is something that um. All defer to city leadership on um and sounds like Mr. Parker, maybe you want to add.
Pops right up.
Yeah, I mean, I I think the answer to that question is we'll we'll start uh our budgeting process in the spring and around April. Uh and May, and if we, you know, if we don't have a definitive answer from the federal government by that point, then we'll probably start including this in our prioritization process for our. Our budget request for the year.
Okay, in and I'm assuming that there's some efficiencies or scale uh. Our overhead is is less than trying to implement a program where we have have it as you guys have. Sorry, I'm missing my words. The the size of the buildings that you guys have targeted. If we just went. With one category of the buildings, I forgot what they were, so the twenty five to fifty thousand and not cover the ten thousand, I'm assuming. We could do it for less money, but we wouldn't save as much money as you might otherwise expect because of overhead and other things.
Um, yeah, thanks for that question. There there certainly are efficiencies associated. There is a base cost for. Running a benchmarking program, and as you add more buildings, you know, the cost per building will building would go down, so so that's a um. A good observation. That would be correct.
Yeah, sorry, that was a terrible question, so uh I appreciate you wading through that. I I will simply say that I'm very enthusiastic about this. Uh Mr. Parker, who popped on very quickly. Had a me met with me uh myself and I assume others as as well after we got elected. And we discussed this and he can he counseled patience, wait, it's coming, it's coming, and and now we have it. Um and yet, maybe we don't. So it's a it's a little bit hard to continue to stay patient. I think there's a lot of enthusiasm. Uh on the program that you guys put together, and thank you very much for your hard work in doing so. I'd love to see this move forward. Even if it's a smaller version of what we would like it to see if we have to go it alone.
And Counselor Singh, I think you may have your hand up from last time, but want to make sure before I don't call on you again. Oh, in there it disappeared.
Yes, sorry, I forgot to take it off.
All right, um. Any more questions from council this evening? Okay, well, thank you to all of you for that um presentation and the work that you put into. Kind of conceptualizing and researching potential opportunities for the program. It's great to see. Uh movement in that direction, and I'm really excited for us to continue the conversation. I think. It will, you know, whether we know or not by the 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 planning portion of our this year's retreat, I do think that it's something that. Would probably be good to be considering within our greater goals. Um as we're moving forward, just with the potential that we may need to pivot on that. So. Thank you, everybody, for putting that together and and helping us realize that we have something of a of an idea, um but we still need to. Make sure that we've got the funding behind it, um whether it it's a source that we thought it was or another source that we need to look forward to in the future. Um with that, I will go ahead and um shift us on to our next agenda item this evening. And um we have tonight, anybody that would like to bring forward any committee reports? Do we have any committee reports this evening? Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Hi, I will do a brief HPC Housing Policy Commission report. Um and to say that at our last meeting, we had our first public commenters, which was uh I think maybe we've had one other one time. So very exciting. I'm thrilled to see that people are starting to get engaged in that space, especially as we're moving into. Some like bigger policymaking type discussions that have been, you know, built on um a year and a half of really learning oriented types of meetings. So we were talking about the inclusionary zoning, uh potential of an inclusionary zoning policy. And we discussed one model in particular, and I think we were able to have really excellent discussion and some levels of consensus around. Some basic parameters of functions, basic parameters of predictability, which I'm really thrilled about. Um our next housing committee meeting is on the evening of March, apologies, thirteenth. So that's not this coming Thursday, but I believe the Thursday after that, we will have um time for public comment at the type of that, at the top of that. And um based on our um conversation last time and then where contractors at and where some inclusion uh where some of the. Signing a comp plan processes are at, working on finalizing that agenda, hoping to get it out um by the end of this week, um if not posted. Uh actually publicly by early next week, so people have at least a couple of days um to see it before uh knowing if they need to. So people have at least a couple of days um, to see it before uh, knowing if they need to attend or listen or comment. And um, I think that is our most major committee updates.
Thank you. Any other committee updates? Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. I just wanted to provide a brief uh, update on our legislative committee. Um, we are almost halfway through the legislative session, which feels wild to consider. Um, but uh, we have had a couple of meetings and we are going to be meeting again um, this Thursday. Uh, so just wanted to provide, council was just some updates um, on some of the bills that we've discussed so far, knowing that there's more on the horizon, we're continuing to sort through. Um, so we've taken a support position on HB ten forty-four, which is local funding, funding for vulnerable road user protection. Um, that bill unfortunately did die, but we'll be coming back in another form. So we will be seeing what other um, ways there are forward on that. We are monitoring um, HB ten thirty accessibility standards and building codes, HB ten thirty-two, infrastructure to reduce homelessness. Um, and HB um, ten ninety-three, um, which is limitations on, and uh, on anti-growth land policies. We're in monitor positions on those three. Um, and then we also took support positions last time on HB twelve eleven, um, which is regarding tap keys imposed by special districts, um, which uh, Counselor Lo testified on last week. Um, and um, SB one, which is Colorado Voting Rights Act. So um, there is uh, mu- more of session to come. Uh, we look forward to Thursday's meeting and future work. So thanks to my great committee and Mr. Goldstein for everything.
Your pro temp, Sharazai. Yes, thank you. Uh, the screening committee will be meeting tomorrow evening and Win- Wednesday evening. I just want to show some gratitude to folks who've been sitting in the queue. Um, we're excited to get through some applications for our boards and commissions. And then we hope to round out everyone uh, the first week of April with um, our last uh, screening committee meeting for the first part of the year. And then um, with Dr. Cog, we had um, Council of Bures' boss come from the Regional Air Quality Commission and give a great update. So it sort of dovetailed on what we're talking about today. And I'm excited to report that at the last meeting, I was voted in as part of the exec committee for Dr. Cog. So excited to have some more robust updates for you all uh, in coming months, and that's it.
Congratulations. Any other reports, any other committee reports tonight? All right, well, um, seeing no more business, we will go ahead and adjourn tonight's study session at eight oh nine PM. Thank you, everybody.